Good evening and welcome to the Vineland Board of Education Public Hearing on the 2017-2018 School Budget. It's May 1st, 2017 at 6:00 PM. Roll call, Ms. Haley?
Ms. Acosta?
Here.
Ms. Cottisbody?
Present.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. Medio?
Here.
Ms. Rios? Mr. Sabrana?
Present.
Mr. Boardley? Mr. Jennings?
In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vineland Board of Education has caused notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following, announcing time and place thereof, agenda, et cetera, the Daily Journal, the Press of Atlantic City, the Grapevine, the Clerk of the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. Flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take a moment to welcome Mr. Cedric Holmes to our crew up here. Was sworn in today. Was sworn in today, what time, Mr. DeSanto?
About 1:00.
1:00 this afternoon. So he's a fresh newbie here. Flag salute. So, right now, we're going to turn it over to Mary.
Okay, we're going to begin with a budget presentation with Mrs. Helen Haley. It'd probably be best if our board members went and sat down there.
Me?
If we all sat there, then we could...
Oh, okay. Oh, it's on the screen.
My name is Helen Haley and I'm the Business Administrator, and we will go over the budget presentation at our public hearing. Just to give you some background on the process of the budget so far, the three dates listed here are the dates that we met with the Finance Committee to go over the budget. We started in November, and then we met again on January 31st where we presented a balanced budget, and then we met again on March 6th to prepare for the public presentation of the budget. We also met with other board members on February 2nd and February 7th to go over all the budget printouts that were presented to the committee on the 31st of January. During the process, we meet with all the various departments and the school principals and supervisors in a period from October through December in order to gather all the information and to create a balanced budget. As I said, January 31st, we presented the budget to the Finance Committee, and then we did not have final state aid numbers until March 2nd. And then March 8th was the budget presentation originally. This budget presentation is very similar to the one that I gave on March 8th. Really, the biggest difference is that the original one that was presented was a 4% tax increase, and this represents a 2% tax increase, which is 1.8 cents increase, and that's what was approved to submit to the county at that time. As mentioned here, on March 15th, the board voted to submit the budget that was presented, actually, the budget that they agreed to, which was 2% increase. The deadline to submit the budget was March 20th, and we did upload that to the county on that date. The county then reviews the budget line by line, and they have a period from that date through April 24th. They send us a bunch of questions. We had, I think, over 30 questions, and we answered them right away, and then we received approval on April 12th. On April 25th, we met with the Finance Committee to go over the upcoming procedures that are finalizing the budget, and then that leads us to tonight with the public hearing. On May 3rd, we'll have a special meeting at 6:00 o'clock, right before the start of our work session. So our work session will start immediately after, but the special meeting on May 3rd would be to vote on the final budget. In preparing a budget, you want your revenue, which is a plus item, minus your appropriations to balance to zero. Usually when we start, it's not that way, but we always pare it down to get to that zero. The revenue side is comprised of state aid, which has been flat for many years, the local tax levy, the local non-tax revenue, which are items that are internally budgeted for. We get tuition revenue in from special ed students that we bring into the district, and we have various fees, interest, rental income, that type of thing. We also have extraordinary aid and semi-aid, which is tied into special education. The extraordinary aid is also special education aid from the state. Use of fund balance. What that means is at the end of each year, there's usually a surplus, because you typically do not spend your entire budget, because you project a number, but it doesn't always come in. You project several items, many items, but they don't come in exactly at that amount. So there's usually surplus. The surplus goes into fund balance, the auditors come out and calculate the 2% that must remain in fund balance, and then a certain amount of it, which is called excess surplus, must be applied to the upcoming year. Then there's capital reserve and maintenance reserve. We do not have any of that for this year. This slide represents the whole revenue side of the budget. As you can see in the top part, it says state aid. State aid increased by $11,300, which ties into school choice. Overall, that's considered flat state aid. And like I said, for years, I think since 2009, all the districts in the state, from what I understand, received relatively flat funding. And right now, what's being talked about is a change in the funding formula. So that could impact that section of the budget. The general fund tax levy, that's the tax levy that the local taxpayers will pay, and it's an increase of 2%, which is $452,188 added to the revenue side of the budget. The local non-tax revenue, which I'll go over those items later, increased by $219,000, and that's mostly projecting what we think the revenue will be. Special ed, semi, we went over that. Grants, that's really our Fund 20, we call it, and it includes ECBA, No Child Left Behind, IDEA, those type of grants. And with those, we have to budget less than we usually receive, so that's why the number is less there. Fund balance is what I was just talking about. You have accumulated surplus or fund balance that must be applied to the future year. The auditor always calculates that for us, and that's one of the numbers that we wait anxiously for each year. We get it around October, because that tells us how much we can apply to the next year. So this year, you can see, it was $8,777, which is an increase of 2.2 million from last year. That really helped us in balancing the budget this year, and mostly that comes from, like, some of the procedures that we do in putting in long-term subs. Instead of hiring people, you save some breakage there. We cleaned up a lot of purchase orders that were lingering, that we didn't need in the system anymore, and so it accumulated some more money. I don't expect us to have that much next year. Capital reserve, like I said, we didn't budget anything for that this year. This slide shows a visual of the revenue side of the budget. As you can see, most of our revenue side is state aid, 79.7%, and the local tax levy is 13.4% of the revenue. This is another visual, really of the same thing, just in a different format. You can see state aid is a large portion of our revenue, the local tax levy is much smaller, and the fund balance is even smaller. The state aid formula concerns. If you were following the newspaper a few months ago, you probably read a lot about Governor Christie's formula that he had proposed, and that was to give $6,599 per student to every district. And that would be a severe decrease in our state aid. So we're hopeful that that does not happen, but on February 28th, Governor Christie announced that he would give legislators 100 days to present a new funding formula. The deadline for that is June 8th. It could go various ways. One of them is the SFRA formula, where we receive adjustment aid, because everyone, like I said, has been held harmless to receive flat state aid. So if the SFRA formula is used, we would get less state aid there, too. So a bunch of South Jersey school districts joined together to form South Jersey Coalition to work with Salmon Ventures to try to be heard, have South Jersey heard by Trenton, so that way they know the issues that we face. In Vineland, our enrollment has remained steady, but we face rising special ed costs and transportation costs. So we wanted to make sure that they knew that, because that's part of the whole calculation of the state aid formula. So if they could take that into consideration, that would be good for us. Again, we're not sure what new formula will be presented, and we are not even sure if it'll be applied to 2018, which is the budget right here, or going forward. There's not a lot of news coming out right now about it, so we're just trying to just follow it and be heard. The local fair share that's calculated for us would be significantly greater than we have in our budget, so we're hopeful that some of this gets conveyed to Trenton, that it would hurt us very much if they changed the formula. The tax rate comparison. I compared 1998 to 2015, and you can see the percentage of the whole tax rate that we pay in Vineland. So if you look, in 1998, the school portion was 31% of the tax levy that you would have on your home. And the city was 22%, and the county was 35%. Over the years, the school didn't raise taxes for a number of years, but the other areas did. The city and the county did raise their taxes. So you can see the school tax in 2015 was only 22% of the whole tax levy, whereas the county had gone from 35% to 41%. This next slide shows a comparison of the tax increases by those different groups. From 15 to 16, the school raised taxes by 2%, which equaled 1.5 cents. The city raised it only .3 cents, the county 7.7 cents. If you look at 2014 to 15, the school, again, had a 2% tax increase. In that year, it was 2.2 cents. The city raised it 4.8 cents, and the county 6.5 cents. So this, as I was saying, does contribute to the percentage difference in the county having more of a percentage. On the appropriations side, that's your expenditure side of the budget. And usually when we start out the budget process, you'll hear us use the term shortfall. And what that means, it doesn't mean we have a deficit, it just means that when you roll forward all the expenses, the expense side is higher than the revenue side. And the expenses that are usually higher are the salaries, the health benefit premiums, the charter school tuition, and the technical school tuition. So we have to manage those, but at the same time, look at the revenue side in order to balance that, or cut other appropriations accordingly. So when we started out, we were saying that we had a shortfall of $5 million. Whoops, wait a second. $5 million, and we took that down to zero. All right, here's the appropriations side of the budget. As you can see, the first line item is the transfer of funds to charter schools. Every year, the charter school enrollment does go up, but what happens is they give a projected enrollment increase around February or early March. Their increase would have us raise the tuition line by 39%. Historically, it's gone up 9%, so we felt more comfortable raising the tuition in our budget by 10%. We voiced that concern to the county as well, saying that we feel that their numbers are inflated, because when the October 15th count happens, the numbers are always more in line with what we've budgeted. So this particular year that we're in right now, we're pretty much even to what we budgeted at the $4.7 million. So using that historical trend, we then budgeted 10% for next year. But still, it's $482,000 of our budget. The other line items are school-based budget, which is all the schools that feed into the general fund. The general fund budget, which is basically the areas that are not specific to school, but more general over the whole entire district. Capital outlay fund would be all of our equipment items that are over $2,000 and construction projects. And special revenue, like I said, are our grants, all the grant money, and we have to budget less than 100% there, because we don't know what the grant funds will be at this point. So you can see, overall, the budget is relatively flat and increased by .85%. The goal, as I was saying, is to balance the budget, but we balance programmatic with financial. The budget approach, when we started, we had a shortfall of $5 million, and again, that's not a deficit, that's not overspending, that hasn't even been spent yet. That's just rolling the numbers forward. So when you have all the salaries, you roll them forward contractually to what it says in that particular bargaining unit's contract. And then healthcare, we go out to see what that increase will be, and so forth. So we anticipated $5 million, and we went through the process and took it down to zero. Included in the budget approach was finalizing the planned repurposing of Landis Middle School for more cost-effective use. We met with principals and supervisors to maintain a flat, non-salary budget. We analyzed class size and staffing, and we reduced positions through attrition, consolidation, and enrollment-based staffing equalization. We try not to cut individuals, but we cut positions and we move the people that we have around. That's part of the reason why we have, I don't know the right terminology, with a short-term contract or long-term contract, but when people are hired in those positions, their contract is really through June, and as positions are cut, our existing staff move into those positions, the open positions that we still have. Another part of the budget is to expand the Cunningham Academy, to include middle school population and to save money on out-of-district placements. Also, in this budget is considering hiring armed security guards and selling vacant lots and older buildings. So far, since we started the process, we have sold two of the buildings. We sold the Oak and Main Building and the Panther Road Building. The positions that were reduced from attrition and consolidation on this slide total 25.5 positions, and all of these relate to the repurposing of Landis School. So you can look through the slide to see the positions that are cut there. Then there's also additional staff reductions through attrition and consolidation. There's four security guards and a half of a custodian at Almond Road. So the total positions that are cut in this budget are 30, which equals $2.2 million in salaries and benefits. Also included here are ECBA reductions. And ECBA does not affect the general fund budget, because it's all from an ECBA grant. Here, we're cutting a net of 12 positions. There's 15 cuts, but then there's some additions to master teachers and preschool intervention teachers. There's also a reduction of 11 in-site positions because of the closing of Almond Road. The new positions in the budget, there's not too many of them, but we have two and a half special ed aides, one special ed teacher, and six custodial positions will revert from contracted substitutes to full-time employees. The other thing we did is we looked through the budget to see if anything else could be reduced based on actual versus projected. And we look back a year or so, just to see how everything's coming in, to see if we can cut anything. So we've cut insurance, and this would be like workers' comp and so forth, because the premiums have stayed pretty level, and we get some return from the workers' comp premium that we paid, based on the experience, and also reduction of salaries. Utilities, we took a good look at the utilities and felt that we could reduce them by $123,000. And the transportation budget includes some other savings, because we're doing the co-op, Cumberland County co-op, and also doing lease purchasing of buses. Non-salary increases. So we talked about the salaries, but there's also other items that are increasing in our budget. Some we have no control over and some we do. Charter school tuition, like I said, they would have us increase it by 39%. We have not found that to ever come to be, so we are budgeting 10%. That's $482,000 that's included in our budget. VOTech tuition, with the increase of more full-time students there, we are increasing 473, 550, but that also applies to other vocationals, not just CC tech. Inclusion portion of preschool funded by district and ECBA. Even though the ECBA program is funded by a grant, the inclusion portion's not. So any special needs children that are in the ECBA, in the preschool program, we have to fund that out of our general fund budget. So we budgeted $418,000 there, because we do have an increase in that area. Cunningham Academy, like I said earlier, we want to expand that, so that's an additional 364 in the budget. We have textbooks that we'll be buying for $250,000, a phone system that we're going to convert to that's on the cloud, that has a net effect of $100,000. Capital outlay, $483,000, higher than last year. Security armed guards, we have budgeted 15 positions at $32,375 each for $485,625 in the budget. The school-based budget, that's the increase, like I said, at the school districts, and we try to keep all the supplies and so forth flat, but then the other items cause somewhat a slight increase there. Employee benefits, that's all your FICA, Medicare, health. That's an increase of 189, because some of that is included in the school-based budget. And the outsourced substitutes, that's really to make it more in line with actual. Okay, other highlights. The repurposing of the Landis Middle School creates a reduction of salaries and benefits of $1.75 million. If you look down at the bottom of this slide, the budget for 2016 was $5.8 million, the budget for 2017 was $4.6, because we had moved one grade level out of that school. Now by removing the remaining, we would save $1.75 million. Also, health insurance premiums, the average premiums between health, dental, prescription was an increase of 7.2%. On the revenue side, I was talking about the local revenue that we have. First of all, the local tax levy is an increase of 2% in this budget, which equates to 1.8 cents, and it contributes $452,188 into the budget. The other items that we budget for on the revenue side are the sale of school property, $650,000. So far, we have $550,000 in the two buildings that we sold. We also have lots that are for sale, one grouping of eight lots, and then one separate lot on the boulevard. We do have offers on those, and we will be negotiating with them, so I feel pretty comfortable that we'll be able to meet this projection. Transportation cooperative revenue, like I said, we branched out, and we now participate as the lead organization for the Cumberland County Cooperative for Transportation, so that brings in $87,500. We rented out space at the warehouse, we get $27,216 for that. We've been advertising on our buses. We had hoped to make $10,000 on that. We've surpassed that amount. Year-to-date, or, no, sorry, over the two years so far, it's been $30,875. So we're being conservative and only budgeting $5,000, because half of it has to go towards fuel. The other area where it came down is the homeless revenue. We get money for billing other districts that have homeless students that come into our district, and we also get money from the state if the homeless student was originally from another state outside of New Jersey. That has been going down, I think mostly due to efforts within our district to find out who qualifies for homeless and who doesn't. So that's been decreasing. So on one side, we get less revenue from other schools and the state, but on the other side, once the homeless student is here a year, they become our expense, so this is actually a good thing. Other miscellaneous revenues have gone down 165. The fund balance, like I was mentioning, our number's higher this year at 8.7, so $2.3 million helped to balance this budget, just from the surplus from last year, yes. And then there's another calculation that comes out in the budget software from the state, and that's just something behind the scenes that tells us how much we have to take from the fiscal year 2017 budget and put it into the 2018 budget, and that amount is more than it was last year by $90,000. Capital reserve, we didn't contribute into that this year, so we don't have that adding to the budget. Capital outlay projects. We have $2.281 million in capital outlay. So I'll read off the different projects there. Under our construction services, we have two roof replacements, and they're sectional roof replacements, for a total of $850,000. We have the Landis renovations for central office space at $450,000. Renovate VHS locker room, bathrooms and showers, $250,000. Flat roof replacement at Landis, $150,000. VHS sectional parking lot repaving, $125,000. Bleacher replacement, VHS South, $125,000. New security doors, we've been going around to all the schools and replacing the doors. In this budget, we have two schools, $55,000. Cleaning equipment replacement, $40,000. Network infrastructure, $170,000. We've been budgeting that for the last several years as part of our plan, long-term plan. Multimedia equipment, $20,000. A service truck for transportation of $38,000, and garage equipment of $8,000. So the whole capital outlay budget went up, $483,000. Included in this budget also is lease purchasing of buses. Over the last two years, we have financed buses, and what we do is we go out to bid for the financing side, and then we buy the buses, usually from a co-op. So by bidding out the financing side, we end up getting like 2% or less sometimes in the interest cost, which is really great. So in this particular, and we financed it over five years. So in this budget, we have these buses that are listed. The rate that we're anticipating is 2.35%, and the payment will be $226,777. The tax impact. If you compare last year's tax levy to this year's, it's $452,188, which I had mentioned earlier, which equates to 1.8 cents on the tax rate. The average home is assessed at $159,372, which calculates out to $29.20 a year for the average household. Here's a rate comparison, kind of to look at what I talked about earlier, to see, if you just look at the school rate, it was 2.2 cents two years ago, then 1.5 cents and 1.8 cents this year. And if you compare it to the other areas, ours is relatively lower than the county or the city, except for the city was low last year, but also our percentage has decreased over all those years that I had mentioned. Here's the same information, just presented in a different way again. The tax increase, oh, that shouldn't say 3 cents, I didn't update it. It should be 1.8 cents. That was the old one. Well, sorry, I'll have to change that. It should be 1.8 cents, which is $29.20 a year, $2.43 per month, and that's based on the average assessment of $159,372, and lists the tax rate. Also, for seniors, there's a senior tax freeze application that if you have certain qualifications, you may be able to apply to have your taxes remain steady. So this is the link to the senior tax freeze. This budget presentation will be on our website, so if you want to see it again, you can. Otherwise, there's copies up front if anybody wants a copy of it. So that's pretty much the whole thing, and I'd like to have special thanks to Scott Musterell, David Hart, and the finance staff, who worked very hard in compiling all this information, and I couldn't do this presentation without them, and Dr. Gruccio in central administration, the board finance committee, all of who have spent many hours on this, and district-wide feedback and community comments. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. That was very well done again.
Thank you.
You should teach that in school somewhere. So right now, we're going to entertain anyone from the public that would like to discuss, ask questions, converse on anything that they heard tonight.
Helen does have one yellow sheet that she got about the budget.
Should I just close?
Yeah, sure.
Robert Novicki Jr.?
Hi, my name is Robert. The thing I would like to speak about is the armed guards. So I've already talked about the cost of it, so I'm not going to get into the cost again, but I've actually been going to the high school and talking to the students about how they feel about it, and I conducted a mini-poll myself, and I asked them, which I got 141 people to vote on, so it was a decent amount. I asked them how many of them feel like they have a good or a strong relationship with the police in the community, and 81% of them said that they did not. And when I was asking the students if they felt like this would be a good idea, a lot of them said that they would like to build that relationship up before we put that person in there. So I think before we put the armed guards in there, let's try to build the relationship with the elementary schools and the middle schools and the high schools, so that when we put that person in there, the students actually feel safe. Because right now, a lot of the students are in the armed guards. Because right now, a lot of the students don't feel safe around them, and that's the thing that I would like to propose to you guys is, before we just put them in there, let's build that relationship.
Anyone else, any questions, comments, concerns?
Good evening, Vicki Miller, Violin, New Jersey. I have a question, charter schools. Why are we paying for kids, children to go to charter schools when we have the same service in our public schools? Because?
Want an answer?
Well, I know you can't give me an answer, but I can say that when you went to Catholic school, we didn't get, we had, my parents had to pay taxes for the children that went to public school and pay for the Catholic school to go. So why do we have to pay for charter schools when we have the same education in our schools?
Because they're overseen by the state, and the state requires the funding that we would get for that child to go to the charter school that the parent chose to put them in.
I understand that part, but they don't take every child, if they have a disability, if they have a problem. Our schools have to.
They play by a different set of rules.
Right.
But unfortunately, our hands are tied because we, we have no, no say in them not going there, but if it helps any, I can tell you that, and I don't know the exact number, so I apologize, but we have had some students coming back from the charter school, which is a positive for us, so they've come back to our district.
Yeah, I know, it's not all cracked up as they say it is, but the problem is, we're paying taxes for, we have the services here.
We agree. Thank you, Vicki.
Good evening, John Provenzano, Director of Security for the Violin District. I want to talk about the armed guards tonight. What I've been listening to for the last few months is bringing armed guards into our schools. I feel that at this time, we are not in need of any armed guards. We have a great juvenile unit that backs me up every day in all our schools. They're over there when I call them, they're there right away. I think, if anything, I would need more security guards in our schools. Instead of doing way before guards, I could use more security guards, especially in our elementary schools where we only have one guard. As far as the armed guards, our violent police are there all the time, we're not a rural area, they're there right away if I need them. I guess in three, five minutes, they're there. And I think, I think that would be, should be looked at before we approve these armed guards for the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Provenzano. I said, "Thank you." Well, at this time, Dr. Gruccio, I feel, oh, wait, we have more, I'm sorry.
How you doing? My name is Quan Johnson, I'm representing the Violin Football League. I didn't hear anything about our sports complex that's going on. I want to talk about artificial turf that should be going at Violin High on the main football field. Again, welcome, Mr. Holmes on the board. I am a Violin resident. I had the opportunity to play football for the Violin High School and all type of sports. I'm one of the kids that had the opportunity to go to school for free out of, from playing Violin High football. Got an education from Virginia U University, and today I'd just like to speak on that. I would like to ask the board to put artificial turf on Katone Stadium as soon as possible. It would be greatly improve a parent and the safety of the field. Multiple schools in South Jersey have moved forward with this artificial turf to improve the safety of their students and the community members. Artificial turf will allow hundreds of our youth to take advantage of our beautiful historical stadium by allowing it to be used by the band for competitions, sports events, concerts, graduations, and community-sponsored events. And at this time, again, I'd just like to thank you and hopefully that you guys take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Hello, Board Members, Nick Baselli, former Violin High School football coach for 16 years, now founder and president of Violin Blitz Youth Football, and we're fortunate enough to have the pleasure of playing at Katone Stadium. Katone was always the top of the league when we were coaching, as far as how pristine it was and what a pleasure it was, and the field was immaculate. For whatever reason, over the past several years, it's still the top of the league, but unfortunately for different reasons. The field is not in very good condition at all, and it feels very safe. We had the opportunity to bid on an All-Star game for our league this past year, which we won that bid. The Atlanta County Junior Football League Board of Directors came out, because one of the teams we played, the coach for Ocean City, said the field was unacceptable. They came out and agreed. Ocean City, which has synthetic turf, just got put in, and as Mr. Johnson explained, I think it's not only good for football, but lacrosse, soccer, I know it's a one-time expense, but I think it would remove everybody. The rest of the field is immaculate, the sound system, the new scoreboard. I just think the new field would be appropriate at this time if we could get done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baselli. If there's no one else in the public, I'd like to move on to a board member.
Eric.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Burke, I'm sorry. Whenever you guys, just come up when you're ready.
Sorry I'm late, Mr. President, but Mrs. Haley and others have given me a good briefing of what's been happening and what might happen or might not happen.
My name is Lee Burke, and I'm a resident, and I've been coming to these meetings for quite a while, seeing things, things types of topics keep coming up, especially about the budget. And I've also learned to accept the word shortfall as part of our history and maybe part of our future, as do other residents in the state, as well as Violin. Our tax dollars aren't just our own, they're from everybody in the state. And one of the president's comments I made at meetings some time ago was, what we use in fundraising as, you have to have the right person asking for the right amount of money at the right time. But we're asking people who have no idea who we are or where we are for money to help support us. These justify our needs in the past, but we also have competition now from charter schools, from C.C. Tech, and some other choice of places that the parents and students may choose. So what it comes down to now is, the budget approach used was first to address the $5 million shortfall. This budget doesn't seem to reflect that in any way that I can understand. I may not be the only one on that. Okay, so thank you. Repurposing the Landis School, I do agree that it should be taken offline as a school. I don't agree that it should be repurposed for the administrative office to be moved from Reber to the school just to occupy. Centralization of services are helpful, but the district itself is a district, a neighborhood or decentralized operation. So I don't think there's enough reason to make the move now with $450,000 involved. I do agree this school should have its roof fixed, like all the schools should have, which has been a problem for the last four or five years or more. I think there's $7 million needed for that. I also think that the enrollment projections are not realistic. You're going to lose, at least in my opinion anyway, 200 students in various competitive situations like charter schools. I don't think that's been taken into account fully, or even by the county grabs. The other thing is the hiring of the armed security guards. It's hard to react as a citizen to anything that might act as a turn for situations that have occurred around the country, but I don't think that the armed guard situation is one that's necessary. If you need a security plan and it hasn't been produced by our existing security staff, then I think that money should be spent that way, rather than 15 or so other positions of armed guards. I must admit, the PBA did a wonderful job of lobbying for the legislation that allows retired officers to act and take advantage of their training, but in fact, it is additional part-time job for them. Whether that's needed, and if decisions are being made out of fear, I don't think that is the right way to go. I just raised here, so I'm a little hard with my voice. So I think that money could be better spent on better security plans and technology that's already available that other schools abuse. So there's another 400 or some hundred thousand dollars right there. I think this budget didn't meet all the proposed things that they, that you had hoped it would, from an administrator's standpoint anyway. And since we don't have a harsh commitment from the city about even having to move Reber, out of Reber to the Landis School, I don't see the need to spend that money, other than on the roof, which has to be there. That may seem difficult to understand, that you don't want to leave a vast building architecture-wise vacant, but I think there's other repurposing uses that it could have. And I did address the facilities committee about those options too. I've done a lot of hard thinking about what could be done or should be done, other than the move. The city wants, as I understand from Dr. Gruccio, the parking lot area across from Reber to train them. That makes sense to me that they want, but I don't see there's an urgency or sense to have to move the whole staff over. Centralization, like I mentioned before, is helpful, but it's not the only answer. That move, I think, would be more costly. Now, the city may reimburse us in some way, but I'm not quite sure what that is, and there isn't anything in writing that I'm aware of. And I was hoping that maybe the mayor or president of the council would be here to assure us that is going to happen, but that the public is aware of it, not something that kind of sneaks up on us later. I think there's money to be saved still in the transportation area. I admire some of the initiatives they've tried to developing revenue, but also for this year, it's been well set by the cost that we bore early in the year, school year, with the charter school, bus transportation situation, they start earlier than us. And that's another thing I'd like the board to reconsider too, is later starts at the visa to high schools as a pilot, if nothing else, if you're dealing with safety and health of both employees and the students. So the other comments I have now, and I apologize for being late, but they may have missed some things in the presentation, and I wasn't able to put together, but I think the time has come to face reality that even with a 3% increase, or 3% increase in taxes, which I do support, the just shifting around of monies for some of these more nostalgic ideas for even sports, there has to be the reality that parents are choosing and students have other places to go. Now, whether our trend will continue down, I suspect it will because of the flat funding. I'd have a better appreciation for what flat funding means now. I don't know if all the employees of the district realize that, but you can only go so long without having some sort of new revenue come in, whether we get it from the state or not, I don't know. But there has to be other alternatives considered. And I do support the effort that was made by the Alliance to get the leasing, the flat funding. But other things are increasing, the unions, I guess, have settled some of their contracts, I don't know if there's any others. But nobody wants to lose a job, but at some point, they're going to have to realize that parents and students, they just will not be able to get the services they would like or expect it or have had at the best.
Unless there are adjustments here. So I would suggest that the money that was planned to be put in for the move not be accepted, and that it be used toward the reduction of the shortfall or other flat funding that's coming through. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board with any concerns on the budget? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to move to board member comments on the 2017-18 budget, and I think I'd like to start with Mr. Eugene Medio, please. Have anything?
Good evening, everyone. I'll make this short and sweet. Thank you to all the people who came here and expressed interest in commenting on the budget, on things that they thought could be changed, on things that they thought would improve it. And on Wednesday night, we have a special meeting, and at that time, all of your concerns will be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Eugene. John Sabrana, anything?
Echo Mr. Medio's comments and thank everyone for coming to the meeting and expressing their views on the budget. I've stated mine quite plainly in the past, and my position hasn't changed in regard to the closing of Landis and the armed guards and several other things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sabrana. Mr. Holmes?
No comment.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Mr. Fiukki?
None at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Acosta?
I would just like to take the opportunity to thank Helen Haley and her staff for doing a really great job putting this budget together. The presentation was wonderful, and I knew that it was a cooperative effort between all of the administrators in working together to try to come up with this budget, so I really appreciate your efforts. Thank you, and I want to thank everyone who came here today to express their views. Thank you.
Thank you. And there's Ms. Cottisbody.
I'd like to echo Ms. Acosta and thank Ms. Haley and her team, central administration, the finance committee, there's a lot of work that went involved, and I don't think people realize just how much work goes into preparing this budget. I'd like to thank everybody who did come out and speak. Hopefully, at the time, you know, everybody's thinking about what you said, and everyone's opinion is important, and we will try to take everybody's opinion into consideration at the time of our vote. I do have to say, I'd like to address Mr. Novicki. Coming from a police family, I just, I found it a little, it's sad for me to hear that students might be uncomfortable with the police department. I know the Violin Police Department is, they are in the schools, they have, if I'm not mistaken, officer liaisons with the schools, and I know they're developing a rapport with our students. We have PAL, they have other activities, and I'm, you know, I'm hopeful if somebody's uncomfortable that they would reach out. People know my concerns with the security positions, they know my stance, I believe, on Landis. I still would like to know if we move forward with this Landis project, has the city committed anything to us as far as what their commitment would be if they were going to purchase that property? There's just a few things that I'm still a little uncomfortable with, but I'm hopeful that, you know, it will end in a, you know, a good thing. So thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you, Ms. Cottisbody. Dr. Gruccio?
I just want to thank everybody who took the time to come out. We will certainly consider the comments we heard this evening, and the final vote on the budget will take place Wednesday.
Thank you, Dr. Gruccio. Right now, we'll take public comment on any matter, any general matter that they would like to present to us or discuss. You can hear a pin drop. Anyone? I'd like to make it known that Ms. Rios and Mr. Boardley both contacted me prior to the meeting to tell me they the meeting to tell me they had some personal issues, then they couldn't attend, and I appreciate everyone coming here, and I think everybody's working hard, and everybody has their opinions and their sentiments, and it's a process, and we're just going to keep working at it, and hopefully, in the end, everything gets done for the betterment of the kids and our city and our taxpayers. And at this time, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved, second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.